I'm going to call this meeting to order and I'm going to recognize that all council members are present with Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tanru on Zoom.
Yes, I am.
So with that, let's go ahead and start the council workshop and who wants to lead it off? There she is. It's all yours, Monica.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm excited today to conclude our, the completion of the San Antonio Creek Trail feasibility study and I'd like to introduce our consultant, Alta Planning. Specifically, Lydia Kesseler will be giving us the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Monica. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for having me tonight. As Monica mentioned, my name is Lydia Kesseler. I'm a design associate with Alta Planning and Design and we are a consulting firm that specializes in planning and designing trails and bikeways. And I've had the privilege of being the project manager for the San Antonio Creek feasibility study and working with the city of Montclair over the past year to develop this planning effort. And a huge thanks to Monica, Alyssa, Steve, Mikey, all the other great folks, the city that we've worked with throughout the project. It's been a really fun one. Okay, so tonight, I'm going to give you a quick project overview and share what we heard from community members. Talk about the feedback that we received and how that shaped what's included in this plan. We're going to take a look at the conceptual trail alignment and talk a little bit about the next steps for the city now that this planning phase of the project is coming to a close. So I'll talk a little bit about the map that you see here, which shows the location of the creek throughout the city and the connections that we explored as part of this future trail. So the San Antonio Creek, as many of you probably know, runs north-south through the city of Montclair and stretches about three miles. It connects to the Pacific Electric Trail at the north end and goes all the way to the southern city limits at Mission Boulevard. So this is a feasibility study, a planning level effort, so there's no construction associated with this project. It's more of a roadmap that the city can use over time to guide the future development of the trail, which may happen in several different pieces over a number of years. So that we know that building a trail next to the San Antonio Creek for people to walk, bike, and reconnect with nature is something that the city has been thinking about for a long time. And there are a lot of great regional examples of similar projects that have been built throughout Southern California. And one of the big reasons for that is a lot of these creeks and river channels have paths that have been built next to them for maintenance of those flood control channels, just like we have here in Montclair. So in the top photo, you'll see the Sealy Lake Trail, which Alta designed and built that goes through the Coachella Valley. And this has a lot of similarities right next to a levee and several bodies of water. There's also the Santa Ana River Trail, which you'll see in this photo. Many of you may have walked or biked on this yourselves. And then we have a portion of the San Antonio Creek Trail in neighboring Upland where this has already been built. So that's kind of a great example of what we might see in the future. So in the case of Montclair, there is an existing maintenance path on both sides of the channel. So there has been a great opportunity to take a look at using space on both the east and west sides of the trail or the channel to create a trail. So I'll talk you through a little bit the process that we went through over this past year. We know that there's a vision to create this trail from the city level and we really wanted to hear from community members and stakeholders what was important for them to see and be included as part of this future trail. We had a couple of different touchpoints throughout the project, some in-person events this past fall and winter that reached almost 100 people. And we also got feedback through our online survey. That provided a lot of really great information. In addition to these public touchpoints, we also had meetings with a number of different stakeholder agencies that you see listed here, who are going to be really instrumental partners to the city as it moves forward into detailed design and construction. So from our community feedback, we've got a lot of great insight as to what people want to see. We heard really strongly that creating a greenway experience with lots of trees and plants that can provide for shade and heat relief is really important. Also, creating places for people to gather, making sure the trail feels safe to use at night, and thinking about ways to incorporate art, wayfinding, and those sorts of elements were important amenities for folks. And people also really want to celebrate this connection to water and the importance that the San Antonio Creek Channel plays in Montclair today and the significance that it's had historically with the Tonga people. We also asked on our survey and at our events where people want to connect to and how they might want to use the trail. So people are really excited to have a new connection to the PE Trail, which provides regional access to neighboring communities and destinations. And there's also the potential for the San Antonio Creek Trail to eventually connect to the Santa Ana River Trail, which is further south. Folks really see themselves using this trail in the future to connect transit, shopping, neighborhoods, and community parks, and really celebrating that connection that the creek has to Montclair's mountains and water and nature. So in addition to hearing from community members what they want to see, Alta's team of engineers, landscape architects, and planners also visited the creek to really understand, you know, what are the opportunities and what are some of the design constraints that we need to think about? And we took a look at all of the data that we could to really get a close understanding of what our design considerations are. How can we make this trail a reality? So I'll kind of walk you through what some of the standout findings were from this existing conditions assessment process. In this first slide, I'll highlight a couple of findings from the northern part of the trail. So this is between the city limits to the north and San Jose Street. So there's this connection opportunity to the PE Trail at the north, which is a really fantastic connection point. And we know that the city of Upland has already constructed a small portion of the trail, so that connection opportunity is really great. And there's also a lot of parks that are immediately adjacent to the creek. So thinking about ways that we can enhance those connections and create linkages of something we explored. In the middle section between San Jose Street and Kingsley, all the way down here, obviously, we have the 10 freeway as a major barrier. One of the really exciting findings as part of this project was taking a close look at this existing underpass beneath the freeway. This used to be open to pedestrians and by creating a little bit more head clearance, it has the potential to be retrofitted and to be used as a connection for the trail. And then another thing we took a close look at are the percolation basins that are adjacent to the trail. You can see one of them in this photo here. And these serve as, you know, of course, a very important stormwater function for the city. They help to recharge the aquifer beneath the city. And we really want to make sure that they're respected and the trail won't interfere with their technical function. So we engaged with the Chino Basin Water Conservation District to get a better understanding of how this basin's function and concerns what staff might have about a future creek trail. And then lastly, in the southern section, this is where the context of the San Antonio Creek Channel gets a little bit more complex. There's a lot of industrial land uses and the Union Pacific Railline bisects the creek corridor almost at the very edge of the city limits. And so because you have this rail line very close to the southern border and the creek also kind of makes a bit of a turn at this point, thinking about ways that we might be able to coordinate with the city of Pomona in the future to extend the trail into that city is something that we'll spend a bit of time talking about in the plan as well. So after we heard from community members and completed our existing conditions assessment, the next step was, you know, figuring out what this trail can look like. What is that vision? So what we have determined is feasible and coincides with what we've heard from community members they want to see is a multi-use trail that supports people walking and biking, that goes continuously on one side of the channel. And then on the opposite bank, wherever there aren't any conflicts with those percolation basins, there's also an opportunity for a neighborhood walking path. So the full vision for the San Antonio Creek Trail includes this multi-use path on one side and these neighborhood walking loops on the opposite bank. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about the short-term and long-term vision for the trail. The long-term vision for the trail is a continuous experience immediately adjacent to the creek channel itself. But to make that long-term vision a reality, you need over crossings like you see in this top image, as well as the undercrossing of the 10 freeway, to allow people to continuously be right at that creek edge. And so these over and under crossings, they can take more time to design, they can take more money and budget, and sometimes it can be challenging to find the funding sources to make those big infrastructure investments happen. So the long-term vision is something that may roll out many years in the future. And we want to kind of hold that vision firmly as part of this process while also thinking about what the short-term opportunities are to bypass those connections that might be a little bit more challenging. And then one more note on this particular graphic. You'll see that the primary alignment for the trail is highlighted in this orange color. And wherever the walking path is feasible, you'll see that indicated in this dashed black line. So now I'll talk a little bit about the short-term vision. So, you know, community members are really excited to see this trail built as soon as possible and we know that the city is eager to do that, too. So because that longer-term vision with the over and under crossings might take longer to get all of the funding and all the pieces in place, we thought about short-term solutions to build the trail and navigate around those major barriers of the MetroLink rail, the 10 freeway, and Union Pacific Railline. So the way that we do that is to add bike facilities to the existing street network of the city to navigate around those barriers. So you'll see indicated with a star on this plan are the three routes that we use to do that. So in the north end, we would make use of Montavista and Arrow Highway. Around the 10 freeway, it would be San Jose Street to Mills to Palo Verde. And then lastly, at the southern end, Holt Boulevard to Ramona and then Mission. So next, I'm going to walk you through what the trail will look like in different areas. The amount of space that's available on either side of the creek varies throughout the corridor. So where you see yellow on this map, that is what we're calling the typical trail condition. And that has a little bit of planting space on either side. Where you see green on the map, that is where there is space for more trees and parkway amenities. And the dark green indicates the widest areas that are available. Where you see red, the trail is narrower and there is no space for planting. And then in addition to the primary path, there's also, again, that walking path opportunity. So you'll see in this dashed black line where that's located throughout the corridor. And then lastly, you'll see in blue and purple on this map, those alternative ways to navigate around those major barriers that we just talked through. So the next couple of slides are going to show you what the trail looks like in each of these different conditions. So we have the typical trail width, where we have a little bit of space, one to two feet on either side of a 10 to 14-foot trail. And we also have the wider greenway condition, where there's as many as five to 15 feet of space for additional planting next to the trail. And this can create opportunities for seating and benches and other amenities. And then we have the constrained condition, that's in just a few locations where there really isn't a lot of extra space, but still enough to have that continuous path. And then the walking path, kind of typical condition here, is a little bit narrower than that multi-use trail. And there's still some space for planting. And both of these conditions are able to be utilized by maintenance vehicles when necessary. And then lastly, for those alternative routes around the major barriers, we have these kind of typical cross-sections for the on-street bike facilities. So you can see here, kind of a typical condition where there's a lot of space on the road to work with. We might have a buffer that separates people in the street who are using a bike facility from vehicles. And then when there's less space, kind of a more typical condition of standard bike lanes. And this is, you know, what the trail might look like in the future. Because there's an existing maintenance path, again, on both sides of the channel, it's possible to have this primary trail on one side and a neighborhood walking trail on the other. And wherever the path passes next to a park, you are able to have these wider areas, plazas for seating, areas for play, native planting opportunities, and more space for trees that provide shade and cooling. The plan document also includes drawings that show where the trail might go in the future. And we have these drawn out with about one block per page. So I'm going to walk you through a couple of key sections of the trail. And throughout, you'll see these opportunities in pink for amenities and trailheads. The green circles, as you might imagine, give you an idea of where potential trees might be planted in the future. And you'll see the trail alignment shown here in this brown color kind of throughout. The dashed lines indicate some of those alternatives that might be used in the short term. So I'll talk a little bit about what we're looking at here. This shows the trail alignment for the very northern section at the PE Trail. And so this trail begins on the west bank because we have more space available on that side and an opportunity to work with the developer of this particular parcel to help absorb some of the costs for constructing that trail. And then as we progress south, there's a little bit more space that develops on that east bank. So we switch from the west side of the channel over to the east. And as we progress further south in this section, once you navigate around the rail line, we cross back again to the west side because we have these tremendous opportunities for that wider greenway condition where we did not have those on the opposite bank. So we want to take advantage of being able to plant as many trees as possible and give that greenway experience that we heard really strongly community members want to see. And then in the middle section of the trail, between the 10 freeway and Holt Boulevard, we want to shift back again to the east bank to create that connection to Sunset Park and the schools that are on that side of the channel. And really exciting news, the city, as you're probably well aware, was recently awarded a grant to enhance Sunset Park. And as part of that, it includes building a portion of the trail through the park. So that does not include the walking trail that's on the opposite bank, but again, that's something that can be included in future funding requests to kind of realize that whole vision for the trail itself. And then lastly, I'll talk a little bit about the southern section between Holt Boulevard and Mission Boulevard. As I mentioned, the surrounding context is a little bit more complex in this area. You have a lot of industrial land uses. And the Union Pacific Railline intersects with the creek and the city limits, of course, end at Mission Boulevard. So in this section, the trail is again aligned primarily along that west bank because there's a little bit more space available. And because the location of the rail and the overcrossing that you would need to create, you need to use a certain amount of space to make sure that you ramp up. And to create that space, it's going to take a little bit more run to get over that barrier. So you see this kind of swooping shape. And when that bridge lands, it's pretty much right at the city limits where it meets up with Pomona. So think about how we want to potentially coordinate with that neighboring city in the future and think about maybe a joint funding package. Okay. And then now that we've walked through the concept design, I'll share some excerpts from the implementation part of the plan. We've included detailed cost estimates for each segment so the city can include portions of the trail in different funding applications or city fiscal budgets. And then also in that implementation chapter, we've included some notes on the permitting process. All of the stakeholders that you see marked with a star, we were able to coordinate with throughout the process. So many of those agencies encourage cities to have a design review meeting and we have some great information that the city can kind of follow up on as things move closer into design. And of course, thinking about best fit funding sources is something that we want to keep in mind. So we have a table that can be a great resource. And then, you know, we want to make sure that the city has all of the tools to kind of take those next steps. So in that implementation chapter, we talk a little bit about what happens now that this planning process has concluded and kind of provide a roadmap to the city so that it can have success with those funding requests and continued stakeholder conversations. Okay, so I think that was everything I wanted to get to today. And I, again, thank you so much for having me and it's been a real pleasure to work with the city on this project. I welcome any questions or comments you have.
Well, thank you very much. Maybe I'll start with any questions on the com-- do we have any members of the public want to speak, Andrea?
Bruce Culp is raising his hand.
Bruce Culp is raising his hand. Okay, we'll start with Bruce Culp. You have five minutes, Bruce.
Thank you. Really enjoyed the presentation. Thank you very much for that. And a lot of great material in there, a lot of great plans. I think, and I filled out the survey and done all that, so I'm just going to repeat some of the things I kind of wanted prioritized in this. And I know a lot of it is things that are probably pretty considerably expensive. But obviously, that connection to the PE Trail, I think, is, you know, paramount. I know the Sunset Park is going to start off the project, but I think starting in the north, mostly for my own reasons, but that connection to the PE Trail is definitely, it'll get us the visibility that it needs, and the connection to our transit center that'll probably allow for additional fundings. Anything north of the 10 freeway, we have a school there, we have parks, so there's safe routes to school funding we could probably utilize. And then any kind of transportation enhancements could fund some of the northern parts because of the proximity to the Metro, Montclair Transit Center. So I'd really like to see the north part of it prioritized, if not for my own reasons, just because I think the funding would come in faster and be more easily available. Speaking of the over crossings and under crossings, I know that that particular development area on the west side of Montavista at Ricton, that's pretty valuable property. Those developers are getting, probably going to make a lot of money off that. I would ask that they not only include that park, but maybe work on providing funding for an underpass so we can have direct access on the trail as a Class 1 trail under or over the train tracks. You know, the money that they're going to make off that development there, they can easily fund a lot of that for us. So I think we should take advantage of that. Any streets that we have to, you know, in the first round of funding where we don't have access for large monies, I think, you know, there's going to be some temporary street access along Montavista and Arrow. I need, you know, it would be very helpful to make sure that those are really well-marked, Class 2 trails. And, you know, those streets are extremely heavy traffic areas and using, and the current speed limits are way too fast for any families to want to utilize that area of the temporary access on the road. So we're going to have to reduce speeds on those, on those two and do traffic calming measures so that families will feel safe to get on the side, you know, on those streets until we have direct access as Class 1 all the way through. And hopefully, we'll start working with other cities, Upland, Chino, Chino Hills, so that we can get this fully developed, all the way from the mountains down to San Antonio River Trail. That would be great. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have anybody else, Andrea? Anybody in the audience? Come on up. Come on up. And then we have a chance afterward, just feel free to fill out the speaker's card so for staff's information. But go ahead, if you want to provide your name.
Thank you, City Council, and thank you, Alta, for the presentation. I had a couple of questions I wanted to ask Alta and also the city is, is there open access to the adjacent schools that are bordering this trail? How many schools? I know they said a number, but I don't think there was, the number was stated. How many schools are adjacent to this proposed? The second question is, on the neighborhood portion where you call it the neighborhood walking path, which is on, because you have a path on either side of the creek, is that decomposed granite? Is that paved? Is it dirt? That wasn't stated? Because you see the painted path on the right side, which is the off-street trail, but the neighborhood walking side, it's not indicated if that's concrete, blacktop, or decomposed granite. And then all, next question is, how many proposed trailheads or rest stops are being thought about for this, for this portion of this connective trail to the PE trail? And my last question is, the access to the adjacent parks for restrooms, if people are on the trail, where are they going to use public bathrooms? And what would the, what would the hours be in the access to that? If this, the PE trail is open 24 hours a day, do you imagine the same guidelines for this connective creek trail to also be open 24 hours a day? And people knowing that they could connect without having to get in their cars is a great idea, but the bathrooms would only be open during X amount of hours. And I just wanted to throw that question out there. Thank you, that's--
Thank you. All right. So, do we have any other speakers? Sorry about that.
Sorry, I didn't know I was going to have questions, or I would have filled out a card. Dennis Jones, President, Friends of the Pacific Electric Trail. Following up on my, my wife's question regarding schools, I'm sure Alta is going to be looking into access for safe routes to schools funding, because that's going to be a key component to help create access points along that way. A big question is water. So will there be drinking fountains added? And, because that's always a key factor, you know, as we enter our summer season, we're going to be looking at some 100-plus temperatures on a regular basis. Then, you know, just, I'm curious to see further clarification of the trail alignment at Kingsley to Mission. Are bike lanes, other than the trail that's being proposed, still going to be worked and developed and marked in the city streets going alongside this? Because, you know, that's always, as a bicyclist, that's something that I'm always looking for. And I'm sure you're aware, we just placed a ghost bike on Monte Vista close to the PE trail for gentlemen from Upland. And, you know, we don't want to do that anymore. Along the proposed tie-in for this, the question would be about lighting, you know, how much, how far it's spaced, you know, all the, all the new and old questions, you know, will it be safe? How is it paid for? Which, you know, brings me to mind of solar panels on those lights. And will there be trailheads? Where does someone who wants to drive and park their car and then unload their bikes access this? Will it only be at the transit center? Or, you know, will there be other points identified? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I know there was a lot of questions asked by the members of the audience, and I think staff will, I mean, go ahead, Monica.
I can try to answer most of the questions, and I'm going to ask Lydia to assist as well. So let me get to the ones I know for sure. As far as the neighborhood walks, it would be DG. And trailheads and stops, rest stops, that would be part of the design, the ultimate design as we're, this is a planning, a planning effort. And there's opportunities to these, to implement those as we go through a final design, once we decide to go for funding opportunities. But definitely, that should be part of a final design. Drinking fountains, that's also part of a, of a final design as we put a package together. This gives you an overview of what the trail should look like, but those are details that we can implement again as we go through a final design. Bike marking signs, yeah, whenever we're designing any ti, any kind of bike facility, definitely we'll make sure those are, you know, there for, for safety. I'm also a cyclist, so I agree with you. And as far as lighting and solar panels and safety, same thing. It's part of the design package as we move towards that next phase. Access to adjacent parks or restrooms. As a matter of fact, we are working on a future restroom facility for the PE trail as part of a MetroLink Phase Two efforts by, by different cities. And that's something that the city of Moncler will be maintaining, and that's coming up, I believe, by next year. So there will be a restroom really close to the PE trail by the, on the west side, the, right where, where it starts. So, and, you know, we have restroom facilities at some of the parks, and maybe we will look into future possibilities of installing other restrooms again as we move forward with that final design of each segment, if there is an opportunity. I'm sure we can look into that as well. Okay? As far as the access to adjacent schools, Alyssa, I don't know if you can pull up the exhibit that shows, I believe there's three or four, I don't have it, but I do want to point out that the final report, which is pretty thick, like this, there's a lot of detailed information in that report as to all the connections, how far you are from schools, parks, Civic Center, all of that is in there, and it's, there should be a link to that report if you want to look into it further. But I believe, Lydia, did, do you remember how many, I'm sorry, how many schools are nearby? I think, I want to say three or four.
I believe it's three.
Okay.
I just did a quick visual scan myself, but as Monica mentioned, the full report shouldn't have been included, but the city council agenda packet, so if there is a fourth one that we're missing, we can catch it in there.
Oh, okay. And then I, there was a question about the trail alignment specifically at Kingsley and Mission. Again, all of those details are in the report, and I'll be happy to, and if you want to call me later on, we can discuss into more details if you want. Yeah, I'll give you my card. Are there any other questions I can answer?
Start with Councilmember Martinez. Go ahead, Carissa.
Thank you. Not necessarily questions, I just want to say I appreciate the very thorough report that was given to us and the city and the Department of Transportation, and I know Alta all had put their hand in creating this report. But also, I appreciate that the community is involved in the process and that we're reaching out to our residents to figure out what exactly it is that is important to them. Personally, you know, I, I care most about safety, and that goes hand in hand with being away from traffic, having water fountains, having appropriate lighting and restrooms. So those are all fantastic issues that were raised. So thank you to the speakers for bringing those up. And I, it would be great if, as this project develops, you know, we continue getting the community involvement, and I hope that we do have speakers that continue to speak up to particular issues that the residents that do cycle or walk or would use those trails might be aware of that, you know, otherwise we might not be aware of. This project is wonderful. I'm glad that we're reaching out to create an environment where people in the southern part of our city could come up to the northern part of our city without having to use their vehicles and could get exercise. It's taking into consideration people that walk, people that cycle, and hopefully people that walk their dogs. I'm sure that's being taken into consideration as well. So thank you for everything that's going into this project.
Thank you. I will pass that along to other members of the team, but yeah, it was, it's definitely a team effort. We had all the departments involved, especially Alyssa, to, for coordinating, all of us actually, to move it forward and take it to this point. So definitely a team effort to get all that, all the input and also the community.
Great. Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, staff, and Ms. Kinslaw. Did I say that right?
Yes.
I have a series of questions, and they're not in any particular order, so they may appear to be disjointed and all over the place, but I jotted them down as the presentation was going on. Was the reason for designating the part of the city, San Jose, to Kingsley, the middle part of, of the city, only because that is predominantly our residential areas within the city? That's the first question?
Sure. So that really had more to do with how easy it is to construct each segment of the trail. So between San Jose and Kingsley, there aren't any major barriers that cross the creek channel. So it would be a pretty good kind of chunk of trail to think about building of one continuous project piece.
Because clearance is already established with the establishment of residential housing?
Right. So throughout that section, they wouldn't need any over/under crossings. You can just make use of the existing maintenance trail that's at grade, and all of the crossings for the street can happen at roadway grade, of course, with additional crosswalks and other safety measures on those roads.
And did I understand you correctly regarding the, under, the pathway under the freeway, were you advocating that it possibly be a walkway? If, I believe you stated, if we had head clearance, it could be a walkway?
Yes, that's correct. There, it was actually, we discovered through the project process that, I think back in the eighties, that was originally constructed as a pedestrian underpass. So there's a sidewalk that's built there, and the clearance between the deck of the freeway and the sidewalk itself was just a little bit too short for a minimum required trail that uses bikes and pedestrians. So there would need to be a little bit of additional clearance space that's made that we think would be feasible by excavating a little bit further.
Now, I understand this is only a design concept, and the actual details are to be determined, but with respect to that, I'm a little bit apprehensive about that area being a walkway, only because at present, it tends to be a place where homeless individuals try to seek shelter and also a dumping ground for large bulky items, mattresses, refrigerators, you name it. I, I think because of the area and it perhaps being more secluded even more at night, it might attract more of that. With respect to that pathway, what assurances can we get that the pathway would be safe to patrol at darker hours? My concern would be perhaps an increase in police calls for any crimes that may happen underneath the freeway, simply because one might think they're out of sight, therefore they can do something illegal. Your comment to that?
Sure. So, you know, obviously, that particular area today is not a place that most folks would feel comfortable hanging out. But this is going to be a really significant investment for the city, and it won't be, you know, just a one-off improvement to this underpass. It's going to come with really significant investment to the experience of traveling along this greenway path that connects potentially beneath the freeway. So what we found in our work is that when you have those spaces, those trails that are beautifully designed, that are well-lit, that have been, have really taken community concerns into consideration, you have people who feel comfortable using that facility at all times of day, and the presence of people actively using that trail, it's, you know, the concept of more sort of eyes on the street, if you will. And that discourages people from using it as a dumping ground or kind of lingering when you might not want them to. So it would be an investment that would need to come with all of those other connecting pieces to the trail happening at the same time, so that, it really creates that, that safe connection. And at our last meeting, we had a community member who was talking about how they've seen that really happen with a portion of the PE trail that their home is next to. And they see lots of people using that at all times of day.
In the graphics that you had in the report, I believe the seating area near one of the parks, it appears that it's a half-moon-shaped concrete seating slab. Just a recommendation, at least from me, my concern with respect to having more concrete areas is that they can be prone to being graffiti. So we can try to minimize the material that would be used at these stops to minimize that, that would be appreciated. I know that there would be one side that would have traffic flow and another side would have pedestrian and bike path. Has there been taken into consideration in the proposal that you submitted to us, access for police or fire, fire vehicles in the event that emergency exists on the trail?
Sure. So one of the advantages of building a trail on what's currently a maintenance path is it's already wide enough for vehicles to access if they need to. And the design that we've put forward, you know, still allows for maintenance vehicles as well as emergency vehicles to access the trail if needed. And there's a portion of the document that provides some additional information on that.
And then, piggybacking on a couple of questions that the two speakers came to the podium about, I also wrote those questions down. There are some residents along Amherst, Fana, and Lehigh, near Sunset Park, that complained regularly about questionable activity at Sunset Park. When they walk, families, they find drug paraphernalia, things of sexual nature, whatnot, that happened from the night before. And they try to shield their kids from seeing that type of stuff. Are the trails that are by the parks, are they going to be accessed, or do they have the potential to be accessed 24/7? Are we going to limit the timeframe in which the, the access is granted? And then, I, I would like to know an answer, please. Near those three schools, are the trails going to be accessible 24/7? Is there going to be a barrier to protect the kids from the general public that uses them? And if so, will that be a permanent structure, or even will access be limited based on time as well?
So we certainly want to make sure that community members are feeling safe using this facility. And as Monica mentioned, because this is a planning level study, those very site-specific details of, you know, exactly where fences might go and how access might be monitored is something that comes at the next stage of the design process. So what we've done with this planning effort is we've made sure that we have allocated funds within our budget for all of the things that you could need to make the trail safe. So that includes expenses for fencing or-- So that includes expenses for fencing, for security features, that will include things like lighting or emergency call boxes. And so those are going to be decisions that you really have to make at a more, you know, site-specific level, that includes discussions with the school, and, you know, takes into consideration all of those concerns that you're thinking from community members. Anything you want to add to that, Monica?
Yeah, no, I, exactly. I think when we get to the, that detail of design, we can talk about installing gates, or just the operation of the trail itself, and in coordination with schools and police, you know, whether we need to, again, have gates to open and close at certain times. I mean, that's a possibility, but that would, that would be something we need to discuss, as mentioned by Councilmember Martinez. We would need input from the community as well, and from the stakeholders. And I think Ed wants to add something, but I'm not sure.
Well, I just wanted to point out, we need to remember that the schools themselves are closed campuses, so anybody using the trails just isn't going to have access to the schools. The trails aren't, are going to have corridors that go directly onto the school properties, they just bypass them. So I don't think that there's necessarily going to be an issue related to the schools.
Okay.
And then one final issue regarding safe routes to schools funding. Could I get some assurances that the funds designated for safe routes to schools would first be used for those projects listed in our safe routes to schools plan that we adopted, and that money go to those primarily first, and then if funds are available after all those projects have been met, then we can possibly entertain some of them being used for the trail?
Okay, well, the grant funds, it don't work that way. You apply for grant fund for a specific purpose, and then the money is dedicated to that. So any application for funding for this project, for safe routes to schools, would be in addition to other applications for funding for safe routes to school funds for other projects. So it's just depending on what the state approves.
And I just want to add that this, this project would mostly qualify more for an active transportation plan or an ATP grant, as opposed to a safe routes to school. So safe routes to school is a separate grant dealing with safety for schools, but this is a trail, so it would fall, and in the report, there's various funding sources that this project could qualify for, including safe routes to school, but most definitely, it would be more of an ATP grant.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I don't have any, I don't see anybody else wants to comment, and it is 6:38 this time. And Ed, what is the next, we're meeting tonight, what's the next process? What, what it goes after this?
In relation to this plan, we would be looking at funding. So of course, already you know that we've received funding--
Right.
--in relation to development of the pilot trail adjacent to Sunset Park. So--
Okay.
We will enter into the design phase for that particular section, and each additional section, as funding comes along, we will enter into design phase for each section along the way.
And I just want to add that this report is key to that, because now we have a, a document that shows the costs, the constraints, and so how, how do we build this in the next phases using different types of funding? So this is key to, to get us to the, to apply for other grants in the future. And I want to thank Lydia and her staff for doing an amazing job with putting all the details for this trail. I wanted to say that before I forget. Thank you, Lydia, and the rest of the team as well.
Thank you. It's been a real pleasure.
You know, my, my issue right now is, I'm seeing this for the first time, and I'm seeing this notebook for the first time. I really need some time to go through all this, and I really think we should have a, another continuation, a workshop of this meeting, before we give its blessing. I mean, I have, I mean, we're running out of time here because of the City Council's meeting here, but I asked, I just see, I have questions that are popping up here as I go. And also, trying to understand how we phase this, because I'm hearing that we're going to phase it based on funding, it sounds like it. So I really like to just have a continuation of this workshop at a different date, maybe at a, for a non-City Council meeting date, perhaps, just to make sure we can get through it. Is that a consensus of my colleagues? I know Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tem Ru is also remote currently, and he may have questions, but it'd be easier for him to be present to, to participate as well. So what I'd like to do is, if it's okay with the council, let's just continue this to a workshop, a further workshop on this item, and I'll let staff figure out the, the date and time.
I would concur with that.
I don't think we need a motion to do that, but everybody's okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Ed, if, if you don't mind, just, we'll continue this to a workshop, and I'll let you guys decide the date and time. Okay. Well, thank you very much on this item here, and we will now go ahead and adjourn this, and then we'll come back at 7:00 PM for the regular meeting.